Good evening, welcome to the Oyster River Cooperative School District's School Board Meeting. Tonight is the election of officers, so I would look for nominations from the committee for Chair. Kenny?
I nominate Tom Newkirk for Chair.
Is there a second? So Kenny and Michael. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I'd call for a vote. All those in favor? Unanimous?
Abstained.
Oh, almost unanimous.
What is your reason for abstaining?
Did you go with Hannah?
Modesty.
Okay, thanks. And Tom abstained. That's how fast that moved.
Okay, good job Jim. Okay, we need a nomination for Vice Chair. Kenny?
I move Denise Day to be Vice Chair.
Second by Dan. There are other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor, Denise Day, raise your hands. Six in favor, one abstained, Denise abstained. So Denise, pleasure working with you. I think you've been a fantastic person to work with and forward to working with you another year. And thank you for the confidence of the board. I really appreciated working with all of you and think we've been a good, a good board. So we also have a new student rep, but before we introduce her, I'd like to thank Hannah Jane for her year on the board. We've appreciated your, your good humor, your informativeness. I think you've connected us to the Student Senate and we've gotten input from them. And I think each year the, the student rep takes a step to be more involved and I think you've taken an important step. So thank you so much and we have this gift for you.
And maybe if you would introduce the, the new rep?
Absolutely. So thank you very much. It's been an awesome experience being on the school board. My new school board rep is Patty Anderson. She is a junior. She's, I'm lucky to be a good friend of hers and she is a very ambitious, passionate person. She stands for what she believes in, which is something that I have the utmost respect for. She's very passionate about the environment and I've been able to work with her on the Sustainability Club, which she is a big part of and an important member of and something she's very passionate about. She's been on Varsity Sports since her freshman year on the girls hockey team. And she's a wonderful, smart girl who's very passionate about what she does. So I think she's going to be an awesome school board rep.
Thank you Patty, welcome. Neighbor, my neighbor.
And Hannah, what did you tell Patty about us?
I told her you were all wonderful.
Tried to live up to that. So we want to, there's a need to go into a non-public session and I know some people are here to speak, but we anticipate this will be maybe 10 minutes. It won't be a long non-public. There's a couple of issues that the board has to be informed about. So if we can have a motion to go into non-public, and again, this will not be an extended time, so we don't want to, you know, just take up your time, but we need to do this. Kenny?
So under RSA 91-a colon 3-2 subset C, matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person, et cetera, I move that we go into a non-public session.
Moved by Kenny, is there a second? Second by Denise. We need a roll call vote.
Dan Klein, yes.
Michael Williams, yes.
Kenny Rotner, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes.
Al Holland, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Okay. So the way this works, we're going to go into non-public for about 10 minutes and then we'll come back. Okay, so.
Salmon and we got Acadian Redfish. And it's accepted. Monday, I think we have Acadian Redfish tacos on the menu. So it's just introducing different things to kids and they're, they're accepting it pretty well.
Thank you Doris. If tonight's dinner was any reflection of the meals that you're providing to our students, I think that they're in for a treat. I never had cafeteria food like that, for sure. Our next question goes to Sarah. And how do you see Tuckaway Farm fitting into the larger food system, both locally and regionally?
Well, first of all, I wanted to say that seeing this film is really powerful, this will get to this question. What you saw on that farm with Marty Travis, I think his last name was, really is the life we're living at Tuckaway Farm. In large part thanks to Chuck Cox, who's in the audience, he's my father-in-law, who started farming organically 40 years ago. So that when I married into this farm, the land was already healthy. The food was being produced organically. So those techniques and methods were already happening. Tuckaway Farm has a lot of the relationships that you saw in the film that are very, very positive with people in our community, some of you in this room, with restaurants, Doris mentioned Three River Farmers Alliance. That is basically that consolidated distribution network that you saw them building in the film. Three farms started that cooperative and invited other farms to join them and now we list together through one website that the chefs can look at from Friday to Monday. We pack our orders on Tuesday, they go out Wednesday on one delivery truck. It's been a game changer for us. It also gives, it gives us quantifiable amounts to give into the community. We can grow really exciting things for them that we know they want. The Chefs Collaborative, which was mentioned in the film with Rick Bayless that was started in Chicago. We have a really active Chefs Collaborative in the seacoast. I feel like everyone in this room should be aware that this area is such an ideal, such an amazing place to live for local agriculture because that seacoast network of chefs and the consumers really are educated and want this to happen. So for us, we're very relationship-based, but we don't have to push it. It's there. It's a really exciting place to live for that. So that's sort of how we connect into the community. We host the Heirloom Harvest Project Seed Garden at our farm, which is through the Chefs Collaborative. It's, they're kind of connected. And that Heirloom Harvest Project is meant to work with seeds that the chefs are really interested in growing and that the farmers are excited to grow. So that connection is really clean and tight. We meet once a year and sort of trade seeds and we're growing some of those seeds at the farm. Chuck actually grows heirloom corn specifically for restaurants in the area and for our farm stand and for one Mexican restaurant in particular. The tortillas that you saw being made via Cantina in Portsmouth is getting whole corn from us and doing the traditional processing. And all their soft tortillas are made from these varieties that we're growing on the farm. And they're actually starting what's called Vita Tortilla, which is a tortilla company. So both at the restaurant, at Dos Amigos, they're going to start having a soft taco option and then retail, this traditional method of processing tortillas. So it's been exciting for us. You know Chuck's place in that community really is at the base of that, but the community as a whole has grown and is incredibly strong.
I just wanted to add, when I was watching this movie for the first time and I saw Rick Bayless from Fronterra Restaurant that's located in Chicago, I got very excited because I've actually gone and eaten at that restaurant. And it was one of the most wonderful meals I've ever had and I have to add, one of the best margaritas I ever had too, so. So we are talking about food and drinks here this evening. Erin, the next question goes to you. And in the film, it talks about the importance of relationships to building a strong local food system. How does New Hampshire's Food Alliance help to build relationships?
Thanks. So, so I think that you mentioned Shelley earlier when describing the Food Alliance. We're essentially a network trying to connect all the different groups that are helping to strengthen the food system in, in New Hampshire specifically. And for those of you who, who may not know what a food system is, they talked about it quite a bit in the film. What we're talking about there are all of the processes and the people that are involved in bringing food from farm to table. And then really even beyond that, so from the table, thinking about the food waste. So when we think about the resources, the soil, the inputs, all of the things that go into actually production, to processing, to distribution, marketing, consumption, that's what we're talking about for the food system. So we work with everybody from UNH Extension to distributors and businesses. We work with the Food Bank and folks thinking about how to improve access and consumption, just provide, make sure everybody has equal access to healthy food. I think Sarah's example of the Three River Farmer, Farmers Alliance is this amazing idea. And one of the ways that the Food Alliance tries to help build relationships and spread ideas of things that are working really well in one region to another. So at various events, we've had folks from Three Rivers Farmers Alliance come and talk about how this model is working in the seacoast. And there are other regions throughout New Hampshire then that are taking those ideas and trying to replicate that. So that's one example. Also, we just feel like collaboration, collaboration, working together on common goals. We all want, many of us who are working in the food system all want to see the same things. So if we get together and are working together toward common goals, collaborating on projects rather than replicating things or competing for funds, then we all can move forward together and have a bigger impact.
Erin, thanks so much for identifying the different levels in the multitude of stakeholders that are involved in your work and how they touch like so many of us in this room. And the Alliance is doing fantastic work, so thank you. Doris, the next question goes to you on how are local foods safer than foods purchased from other sources or suppliers?
So I think that, you know, for me personally, I just personally like the idea of less hands on my food before I get, get it. And if, if I feel that way, I want the same thing for the students that we serve. The closer it is to us, the less traveling it makes. I remember going to the Terminal Market in Baltimore when I went to a conference and watching the people unload, I think they were unloading avocados or something and, and their gloves were just black. And I'm thinking, I bet they use those for the last 10 years and never changed them. And people don't realize how many hands handle that food as it travels. So for me, that's safer. For the beef, most of the beef can be traced to the cow if you're buying local, rather than, you know, getting something that is USDA and, you know, there might be 50 to 100 to 500 animals in that batch of beef patties. So getting it local for me is just, I mean, not only does it taste amazing compared to the rest, it's just, to me, it's a safer thing. You're, you're not taking as big a chance. I mean, it can happen anywhere, but if we can lower those risks, that's really worth it. Other than that, the other thing is the local, and I just thought of it when you were talking about the Farmers Alliance, buying local has always been for directors, the hardest thing is getting it delivered because a lot of us are one deep. We don't have clerical, we don't have a driver. And, you know, farmers are busy in their fields. So if we get it delivered to one school, then we have to take it around to the other schools and, and that can work, but sometimes a farmer can't do that. So having the Three Rivers Farmer Alliance actually really saves time for the farmer and they're making one drop instead of a dozen. And, you know, we can have it come to whatever schools we need it to. So that's been really nice. I'm anxious to see that grow.
It's nice to see so many young people and families here this evening. And so Sarah, the next question goes to you on that, how can families interested in supporting and experiencing local agriculture connect to your farm and others?
This is a funny question for us because on the scale of being accessible to people, we're both extremely accessible and meet people all the time through word of mouth and through relationships, but we don't have a road sign. You know, I'm always surprised by how many people know us and also by how many people don't know us and then realize, of course they don't, we don't have a, a road sign out there. But for people looking for local agriculture, there are so many farms around here that offer CSA shares where you can either pick up a box of vegetables or you can shop from their store. We offer a credit CSA, so versus coming once a week and picking up a box of vegetables, you have a credit account that you shop from at our farm stand. It works really well for us and we found that people really like that because they don't always want a full box of vegetables that week. It gives them a lot of flexibility for what they'd like to cook with that week versus what you got. Both systems are fantastic. Seacoast Harvest is an online resource and a printed resource where you can find out where a lot of these farms are and what they offer. There are farmers markets, as I'm sure you all know, in Newmarket and Durham and at the Wentworth Greenhouses through the winter even. You can, really with online research, those things are accessible if you haven't found In terms of coming out to the farm, what we do now, the farmer's market is a really interesting concept in the community. Farmer's markets are an exceptional way for a community to come together around farms. Farmer's markets are not always a great way to spend your time as a farmer. It's really interesting, not because we don't want those relationships, but because that's time off of the farm without knowing exactly what's going to be happening there that day. So one of the ways that we've addressed that is really encouraging people to come and spend time at the farm so they're not just coming, to come into the store, but to walk around and to, you know, to experience what else is happening on the farm. We have Pick Your Own Blueberries. We do, in terms of looking at waste issues, we work with New Hampshire Glean's and other programs where families can come out and harvest food that goes to the Food Bank. And I think a lot of farms are doing that. That's a really great way to work on issues of food justice and accessibility. So there's a lot of resources that, in Lee, actually there's a, I didn't bring any of them with us, but Paul Gazowski puts together a really wonderful map of the farms in Lee with business cards for everybody. So where are the best places to find those? So the Town Hall and the, and the library have a lot of resources like that. And go and visit farms. Usually farmers really, really would love to show you what they're doing.
Erin, I have a part two to that question in that, how can people that are interested in becoming farmers break into this profession if you don't grow up on a farm or you don't marry into a farm family?
I wish I could remember the statistics right now. I just saw a really incredible set of statistics about how many farmers right now are in an age bracket. You know, they said the average is 50 plus. Do you know those numbers? Young women in particular is a huge number of those, are a huge number of those farmers. There are so many ways to do it. In this area, we have students that come to the farm and it's not a direct internship, but there are internship programs. We have people who trade time on the farm and experience on the farm for a food swap. A lot of people will intern on a farm. There's woofing programs where people work on organic farms around the world. There are amazing agriculture programs at academic institutions, both in organic and conventional farming. This brings up an issue that's really important, which is that breaking into farming, one of the main issues is access to land. And access to land in the seacoast, as amazing of a place as this is to farm, is incredibly challenging. So if you're a young farmer, you're typically going to be leasing land, which has drawbacks obviously in terms of what you can do. And that access to land for, for permanent farming is a major challenge. I can't address that here obviously, but that's sort of a, a challenge to young farmers.
So in terms of land access, that's actually one of the big things that the New Hampshire Food Alliance is working on. We have an action team, our Land Resources Action Team, which is bringing together, together different groups working on this issue of access and also just farmland conservation as well. Going back to the statistics, the average age of farmers in New Hampshire is 57 years old. And a study done by a group called Land for Good in partnership with American Farmland Trust just a couple of years ago, also was looking at this issue of, of access. So how do we bring in new farmers? As a lot of these farmers are thinking about retiring, there are, most of the farmers, senior farmers now do not have a successor lined up. So, so it's a big issue in New Hampshire coming up. And I think Sarah mentioned some of the different ways that we're trying to encourage new, new farmers. There are programs looking at trying to match retiring farmers with young people who want to start to farm. And I'll put in, I'll put in a plug actually for one, the, our Land Resources Group and actually our Education Action Team Group through the Food Alliance's sponsoring a screening of The Last Crop, which is a documentary. It's happening April 3rd at the Music Hall. And this documentary film follows family farmers in California actually, who are thinking about retiring, but they've spent 30 or 40 years improving the soil on their land. Their children, their three children don't want to continue farming. And so it's all about how do you maintain farmland in a place where the land is really expensive and things are getting bought up? And, and that's an issue here in, in New Hampshire for sure. So let me know if you have any questions about that.
Erin, following along that same line, what are some of the other big challenges for New Hampshire agriculture? I know when we talked, you had a lot of sta, statistics that you shared that were really staggering.
So yeah, I think that farmland access and conservation is a big issue here in New Hampshire. Farm viability is another big issue. If we're going to preserve our farms, those farms need to be viable. They need to be thriving businesses for the people who are running them. And, and young people need to see farming as a viable career for sure. So that's, so that's one of the things, again, that the Food Alliance, along with lots of other organizations across the state are trying to work on right now. Part of it is connecting farmers to markets. I think we've described and you've seen in the film, a lot of these really great direct marketing relationships, that farmers have direct relationships with restaurants. I think that what Doris and the Farm to School movement is doing is huge, trying to, to link up farmers with larger institutional buyers and larger markets as well. As Sarah mentioned, you can't necessarily just survive on the farmer's markets. So getting it, so having the support of schools to support our local farmers is great. There are a lot of folks working on getting local food into institutions as well, like hospitals and our local grocery stores. That's where most everybody shops.
Oh, yes, yeah, I made sure to tell her. Yeah, you have to bring in brownies every time. Sometimes.
Okay. Back in session. Move to the approval of the agenda and I would like to just add one discussion item that I don't think will take much time, but Gilles Bissenat, who's the lawyer for the ACLU, has contacted me, I think I may have mentioned this before, about the possibility of Oyster River becoming part of a lawsuit should Senate Bill 193 be passed. And so I just want to, you know, just communicate what he sees as the next step and see if we're comfortable going forward with that next step. So I'd like to put that as a discussion item. Are there other changes to the agenda? Hearing none, could we have a motion to approve the agenda with that addition? Brian?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Moved by Brian, second by Al. All in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor of the student rep, in favor of the agenda is approved. Public comment. And these will be for three minutes as usual. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dean Rubin from Lee. I just wanted to congratulate everybody on the election, Brian and Al and Dan. You killed the competition, good. Congratulations to Tom and Denise for their reelection too, for the new student member, Patty Anderson. And congratulations to the district for all their questions passed by a landslide.
Thank you.
I'm Keith O'Brien, here to speak briefly about the cell phone issue. Excited tonight to, to see the survey results and to hear your discussion of them. Before we get to that, I wanted to talk about a few things that I've heard floating around out there that I think should be addressed. The first is, I've heard folks say that it should be a parent's prerogative to give a phone to a child. I'd just like to say that I agree. I agree that it's a, a parent's decision to give a phone to a child, just as it's their decision to enroll a kid in sports or musical lessons, to let them stay up late or make them go to bed early, to give them junk food or raise them on a vegetarian diet. Those are parental prerogatives. But every day, schools make decisions that take the prerogative out of the parent's hands. Schools decide what kids can wear and not wear. Schools decide what kids can eat, carbonated beverages. There's a reason why McDonald's doesn't have contracts at cafeterias around the country. Schools decide how kids can speak. Can they curse at school if they curse at home? No. And when you're 18 years old, even if you're allowed legally to buy chewing tobacco, you can't do that at school. So schools make those decisions and we're asking for you to make the same decision here. It's clear from the research that when a child has a phone at the lunch table or in the classroom, it's affecting not only that child, but the child sitting next to him and the child sitting next to her and the child sitting next to her. It's affecting all of them. Schools and school boards make decisions for the better good of all the children, not just some. The second issue I'd like to raise is about safety. There seems to be, some, people seem to be conflating the current cell phone policy with safety and arguing to keep the current cell phone policy to keep our kids safe. I want to be very clear that every single one of us believes first and foremost in the safety of our kids. I was especially touched a month ago by Dr. Morris's comments here after Parkland where he said, you know, "There but for the grace of God go I." I feel that way every day and I'm sure a lot of you do too. But when we talk about cell phones and safety, you don't have to hear it from me, hear it from security experts. Security experts will tell you, law enforcement, former FBI agents, former police officers, that when you have 600 phones in a school that are all calling at one time, you're overwhelming the local cell phone tower. You're overwhelming the local 911 center. When kids are using their phones in a crisis, they are not doing the thing that they're supposed to be doing. They're not listening to their teacher who's trying to get them to safety. Phones are oftentimes spreading misinformation and worse and most heartbreaking, these phones inevitably don't get shut off in a panic. And a, a ringing phone, a text, bleeding is like a beacon to these folks. So I just want to be clear that every single one of us believes in the safety of our kids. And the policy we're asking for, which many other school districts have, many of them you're going to visit, does not put our safety of our kids at risk. Children may still have their phones with them. There's simply no academic use for them during the school day.
Thank you Keith.
Thanks very much.
My name is Deanna Pilkington. I'm the parent of four children in the Oyster River School District, Mo Harem at the middle school and also the high school. Two years ago today, or two years ago, I stood before this board and requested a view of the middle school cell phone policy after a personal experience that directly affected my son. Today, I want to sincerely thank you for your diligence and serious consideration of that policy. I recognize that individual anecdotes like mine and personal opinions of even a group of parents should not drive policy change. Instead, the driver of that change should be the growing body of research surrounding continuous access to personal cell phones during the school day. This evidence base correlates This evidence base correlates the mere presence of cellphones to increased distraction, decreased academic performance, and negative social and emotional or mental health consequences. This research, regardless of individual parental opinion, should be the driver of the policy change. The middle school has rightly been the focus of much of our discussion and survey questions, and rightfully so, as the most egregious developmentally inappropriate incidents have occurred within the middle school grounds. However, I know the board is going to take this opportunity to reevaluate our policies district-wide. This is an opportunity to identify the culture and the values that we wish to create for our children across the developmental lifespan represented in our district. The social and emotional culture created in the earlier years, particularly in the middle grades, creates a foundation for these kids as they move into high school, where social pressure, emotional stressors, feelings of inclusion or isolation can intensify. So this is an opportunity to promote the culture that reflects the community core values that we wish to instill in our children. I'm aware that the effects of the continuous cellphone and social media use are bigger than what is limited in our school day. But I also know that our district is very capable of leading and stepping out with a progressive, forward-thinking influence. Finally, we are in a district that embraces the evolution and importance of technology as part of classroom instruction. Unequal access to electronic resources promotes disparity in academic success. If access to tech resources is a core part of our curriculum, then this district above any can provide equal resources for all students so that they can each have the digital skills they need to, to succeed in the future. Again, thank you so much for your diligence and thoughtful consideration of our district-wide personal electronic device policies, and I look forward to hearing about the survey results. Thank you so much.
Hi, Sarah Farwell, Lee. Nice to see you all. I have three kids in the district, one at the elementary level, one at the middle school level, and one at the high school level. So I am here to speak to you and to share my support of looking at the cellphone policy again. I guess when my oldest entered ORMS, I was surprised and relaxed at the relaxed cellphone policy. I never hid my feelings about cellphones, my personal feelings, but I didn't push very hard because I could control it. My kids just wouldn't have cellphones. We never had an issue with my kids not having cellphones at the middle school, until I would say the last year of my oldest's eighth grade year. And it was not an issue, it was just, he had a couple of projects that, they went on a field trip, they needed to take pictures, and then those pictures were going to be imported into a bigger project. Great use of technology. And the teachers, you know, that day, I think I let him borrow my cellphone so that he could do that, and I think another project he had to, the teachers had to get a little creative as to how he could do it without having a cellphone. And it was not an issue at all. And what we were thinking at the end of his eighth grade year, I was like, no worries, by high school, I feel that's an appropriate place, appropriate time for him to have a cellphone. So he got a cellphone going into high school, not a big deal. I mean, there's clearly so much research out there to support keeping them out of our middle schools, and I think particularly, I know on this board that there are a number of you who are very concerned with mental health issues, and to me, that is always one of my biggest concerns, and that is my biggest concern with the cellphones. So what has changed for me? Why am I here speaking now publicly? Why am I not just saying, you know what, my kids, I'm just, my kids don't have cellphones, not a big deal? I'm here now because I think in our culture, it used to be the norm that kids received cellphones graduating eighth grade, going into high school. Now, it has shifted, and I think the norm is that kids are receiving cellphones as graduations from fourth grade. And that has really changed what it looks like at the middle school, at our middle school. I know I went and I observed the middle school, I volunteered a lot in the schools, I observed it, the cellphone use in the middle school cafeteria four years ago, five years ago. And it wasn't a big deal. It was, you know, one table of kids, and they were using them socially, to be honest. They were interacting together. And I was like, yeah, not a big deal. And just before I came off the board, I think it was probably a year and a half ago, I went and observed in the cafeteria again, I happened to be in the building, and it had changed dramatically. There were kids on it on social media, and I just think it's because they are more prevalent now. Our kids are getting them younger, and it's becoming more of an issue with our culture. And that is why I am hoping that you will look at this again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Hi, my name is Lori Bromley, and I live in Durham. I have a fourth grader at Moheramitt and a middle schooler in seventh grade. So I just wanted to talk to you guys about the cellphone policy and the perspective from a teacher. I teach fourth grade at Greenland Central School, which is a K through eight school. And so I have the unique opportunity to see my fourth graders as awkward eighth graders. But what I was realizing is I've been in that school for seven years and sat through a lot of staff meetings, and not one time have we had to speak about our cellphone policy, which is, the kids don't use them during the school day. So it has never been brought up at a staff meeting that this is an issue. We've probably talked about chewing gum more than cellphones and kids walking in a line. And so just this week, I was reflecting that we have a policy, the kids don't use their phones. I'm sure they're in their backpacks, I'm sure they're in their lockers, they could even be tucked in their hoodies. But they stay out of the way, they don't interfere with the school day. And from a teacher perspective, it is just never a problem. It's not created adverse relationship between teacher and student. Our student council is not asking to use cellphones. And when a project or assignment warrants technology use, the school provides that. I know very frequently, my daughter comes home and, you know, tells me that a cellphone was needed during class today, and she didn't have one. And so she uses a teacher aid or waits for a computer to become available. But I just really feel like, from a teacher perspective, technology is now the pencil and paper of our classroom, and it's the textbook of our classroom. And just like we wouldn't ask a kid to bring in a textbook, we need to provide that for them. I really feel like the school district wants to do that and is capable of doing that. So, yeah, two main points. We have a cellphone policy at Greenland, and it's really well-accepted. The parents appreciate it, it's not a problem with the teachers, and the kids, I think, really appreciate it. And it's just not an issue. So that's encouragement, I hope, for this community, that it can roll out and be accepted by many groups. And then my final point, just being again, that if the technology is needed for learning, the school district needs to be providing that. We provide breakfast for kids. So if you're going to provide breakfast, you know, the technology, those learning tools need to be right there, whether they have the money or not, whether they've gotten punished and their cellphone's been taken away or not. So I really appreciate your time and look forward to also hearing about the results from the survey.
Thank you.
John Pelagi, Durham, father of three at Moheramitt. I spoke last to the board on February 21st and shared some perspective and potential guidelines for a framework for potentially the policy being rebuilt. I did share it electronically last night. I also brought a few copies for the board, if you'd like, as well. But wanted to just reiterate a few of those points. Did a little more research. I've got about 10 school districts between Massachusetts and New Hampshire that I've referenced in here as well. The conclusion, I'll start with that, was pretty simple. Number one, and to Lori's points, we really need to do a good job of being able to establish separate policies for school district managed technology devices versus personal mobile devices. The districts that I've provided here in this feedback, and the majority that I've researched, have a zero tolerance policy towards personal mobile devices and cellphones during the school day. They've also clearly defined programs and policies regarding technology use in the classroom for educational purposes only. Many of these districts have also embraced a one-to-one or a one-to-one with a BYOD component for a technology program in their district. However, the BYOD component, which is a bring-your-own-device component, or a BYOT, bring-your-own technology, is limited to laptops, electronic notebooks, like AirBooks and Chromebooks, Chromebooks seem to be leading lately, and tablets, not cellphones. And they must adhere to strict user agreements. So from a framework perspective, I believe the policy moving forward should include the following. Clear and encompassing definitions of school-managed technology devices versus personal mobile devices. General guidelines for use, including acceptable use policy, so it clearly defines what's acceptable and what's not. Consequences for disruption and misuse, a school liability statement, and user agreement or terms and conditions that both the parent and the student need to adhere to. And then within the document, you'll find examples of personal mobile device and cellphone policies from Boston Public Schools, Wellesley Public Schools, Lexington, Portsmouth, Belmont, SAU 70, Bedford School District, Bose School District, Hollis, Brookline, and Wyndham, as well as the Massachusetts Department of Education, their planning and implementation considerations for BYOD and one-to-one technology models, as well as the evolution of the one-to-one model in three separate main districts. So hopefully you have a chance to review those, and available if anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Morse, members of the school board.
Just identify yourself, please.
That's second. My name is Chris Gogan, I live in Durham. I'm at the stop sign at Packers Falls in Wednesday Hill that no one stops at, especially students that are late for high school. We've lived here for about nine years. I have a student, two daughters in Mast Way, in first grade and fourth grade. Just to give a little bit of background, right now, my wife is being treated for cancer. She's chemotherapy, first week impacts are just beginning to be being felt, and this morning, a dog, our dog, attacked her. Despite that, everything today was all about getting here, because we have a highly curable form of cancer that will be dealt with within a year. The dog will be dealt with within a week. But the context that we're talking about, the atmosphere that we're talking about setting for our students, and my students in particular, will last the next four years and, without exaggeration, I believe, set them up for their success throughout life. We moved to the Oyster River School System in 2009, in part because of the school system, not because the house was affordable during a pretty gross housing market for everybody else. In fact, in 1988, the Oyster River School System math counts team trashed the Hampton Falls team, and I'm still stinging from that defeat. My wife and I have 30 years of teaching experience between us and have had nothing but great admiration for the experience our students are having here. However, we have also chosen, because of our background in education, to keep cellphones and technology away from our children as much as possible. It is only on Wednesday nights and Saturday nights that they are able to utilize screen time of any type. And the reason for that is because we believe that having free, open-play experiences with their friends is how the human mind was meant to develop. And the research is beginning to back that up. Since smartphones were introduced in 2007, anxiety and depression is on the rise among children. School-aged children are reporting that they're lonely more often, they're getting less sleep, and their engagement in society is on the decline. We're also seeing this in the working environment. We've begun to develop, have, excuse me, long day, disciplinary actions with employees that can't keep their hands off phones. And so while I can keep the phones out of my children's hands and focus on their development and focus on their environment, one of the things that's been great about the school system, and it was wonderful to have Sarah Farwell here, is the cohort of students that my oldest in fourth grade is going through is a wonderful group of kids. But how they influence and how they grow and treat one another in middle school will in part depend on the environment that we create in school. I've worked with thousands of middle school children, teaching outdoors and indoors, and I know the sort of environment that we establish for them is very important. Depriving them, or not depriving them, but with having them withhold the use of phones and interact with one another, I believe is an incredibly important step. I've tried to touch on that in the letter that I've shared, I believe it's a little bit more coherent than her remarks today. But I thank you very much for the review, and I would hope that you would choose to have a very tight control over our phones in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, and we wish your wife well.
Thank you.
Good comment. Hearing none. Could we move to the approval of the minutes from the March 14th? We have both regular and non-public meeting minutes. Start with the public minutes. Kenny?
With the public minutes, I would ask, we postponed it. In reading through them, there were a considerable amount of changes that I wanted to make, and I wanted to make sure that they were accurate, so I wanted to review them, and frankly, just didn't have the time. So you can put that off till the next meeting, and I'll bring those changes.
Is that agreeable to everybody? Okay, okay, those will be dealt with the next meeting. Non-public minutes? Could we have a motion to approve those? Al?
Motion to approve the 3/14/18 non-public minutes.
Moved by Al, is her second. Second by Brian. Changes? All of us in favor, please raise your hand. Let's see, six in favor. Michael, you abstain, right?
He's not there.
Yeah, okay, Michael abstains. Announcements, accommodations, comments from the district?
Hi, Lisa Huppie, Transportation Department. Every year, the New Hampshire School Transportation Association holds a dinner to acknowledge drivers for their safe driving in five-year increments. So they have to go with, let me get this right, preventable accidents, non-preventable accidents, no, preventable accidents, I apologize, in five-year increments, and they receive an award from the New Hampshire School Transportation Association and Hampshire DOT. And I wanted to acknowledge two drivers this year that are receiving awards. Brenda Small will be receiving a 25-year safe-driving award, which means 25 years accident-free. And Jim Thrasher will be receiving a 20-year award, and I think that's amazing. So I wanted to.
Jay?
Jay Rashad, principal at the middle school. This is kind of awkward, but I did promise to share this tonight. The Durham Police Department is actually sponsoring a social media awareness forum for parents. We're having a presenter come in, they're going to speak with the kids during the day at the middle school and high school. And there's also a presentation for parents. I'm going to make sure I get the word out to all elementary school parents, as well as middle school and high school. And the date for that is Monday, April 9th, at 6:30 PM, right here in the high school auditorium. Holly Malaski, our school resource officer, has done a ton of work to organize this, and again, the Durham Police Department is sponsoring that for us. Again, that's April 9th at 6:30 in the high school auditorium. Thanks.
Thanks. Others from the district? From the board? Denise?
Yes, I attended the joint Moheramitt and Mast Way PTO meeting last week, and the presentation was on social media by Susan Leifert and Sarah Curtin, the two technology coordinators, or what their titles are.
Integrators.
Integrators, thank you, technology integrators for the schools. And I want to just thank them, it was really good. We were given the iPads that the students use, so that was really kind of cool. And we went through a number of quite And we went through a number of questions and had to try and choose the correct answers, and it was all statistics about social media, and it was just very informative. I got a lot of the answers wrong, so, you know, I learned a lot, and I really want to thank them for putting that on and for the PTO for sponsoring it.
Thank you. Others? No? Okay, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Fort?
Todd's in here, too.
Okay, who's going to present the cellphone data, then?
I will.
Okay, you will? Okay.
Do you want it now?
Well, we're up to superintendent's report, so I don't know.
Okay, then I'll do my thing, and just roll into Todd's.
Sure.
All right, thank you. So Todd is attending a professional development opportunity elsewhere, so that's why he's not here tonight. So, just wanted to go through a couple of announcements, and then we can go into the survey on cell phones. No, I do not know whether school will be delayed tomorrow, which is why you didn't get the call tonight, because the storm, if you've been listening to it, is all over the map. You know, sometimes it's eight inches, sometimes it's two inches, sometimes it's going to start at 8:00 PM, sometimes it's going to start later, sometimes it's going to be over at 3:00 AM. This is not one that the meteorologists are confident on, and therefore, I'm not confident. And so, if there is a delay, you'll get the call in the morning. So, I get that asked every single time there's any snow coming. On a more positive note, not that that was negative necessarily, but on a more positive note, Sue Caswell and I went to the council meeting this week, and we asked for the release of impact funds that the town collects every time a new house is built, and the impact funds are collected in relation to any school issues or infrastructure issues related to roads that the town may have to do in relation to new residents. So, they collect it, and then after six years, they return it. And so, we approached the Durham Council and asked whether they would be willing to release the impact funds they've collected to assist us in the Mastway expansion. And I have to say, they were wonderful. It was unanimous vote in the release of funds. And so, you know, I want to say thank you to the town of Durham. And then Sue made a phone call the next day, and she talked to the department, and they said, "Oh, well, no, that $100,000 isn't over and above what the town of Durham is going to provide you for next year's budget. It's actually going to be part of it." So, we thought we were going in looking for frosting on the cake, and what we actually got was the cake, meaning that it's a win-win. It means that the $100,000 we get from Durham from the impact funds will actually reduce their contribution proportionately to the school budget next year. But nobody knew that going in, and so, the town of Durham was really thinking they were doing a wonderful thing. We thought they were doing a wonderful thing, and in the end, it was a wonderful thing. It just wasn't wonderful the way we thought it was when we started the conversation. So, I just still want to thank the town of Durham. The council was amazing. Great news in your packet tonight. We have projected a 5.4% increase in health insurance, and the actual increase is .3. Should be a hard copy, a hope, in your packet. If it's not, I have the hard copy, so you know that it exists. And so, that's really terrific news. We don't have for tonight's meeting what that spells out exactly in terms of projected savings to the school system, but it's safe to say tonight that it'll be over $200,000 that we had budgeted, because we thought it was going to be 5.4, and it's turning out to be .3. Susan will have the exact number at our next meeting. Today, we received a $5,000 donation from Yates Electric. I thought that was pretty incredible, and they contributed it towards the baseball team's scoreboard, so that was really super nice of them. They happen to be a vendor, preferred vendor for the district. They're obviously local, and they care about Oyster River, and I thought that was definitely worth noting tonight, because it was such a significant gift. And then, in your packet, for either a future discussion or just for your information tonight, the middle school did get their report from the New England League of Middle Schools, and they were once again awarded recognition as a blue-ribbon school.
Awesome.
And that is in your packet, so if you want Jay to talk about that at a future meeting, I'm sure he'd be glad to. But that's pretty terrific, and I want to commend the middle school for the hard work on being recognized yet again. So, you know, I believe the letter says there is only 60 in the entire New England region. And so, this is actually a very prestigious recognition of our middle school, and I think the number in New Hampshire is less than six. So, kudos to Oyster River Middle School staff and administration, but also kudos to the parents, who send us such wonderful kids and allows us to be the middle school we want to be, and hopefully, we will grow into as we discuss future issues. So, yay, Jay. So, that takes care of that. It actually is a good transition into the conversation that we want to have tonight around the cell phones.
Jim, could I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Just as far as that fund that Durham had, did the towns of Lee and Maberry garner that kind of impact fee, too?
No.
They don't?
No.
So, it wouldn't be something...
Yeah, Sue and I actually had this conversation, and it seems to be a permissive law that was passed around World War II, and it's something that municipalities of larger municipalities adopted, but smaller communities never grabbed onto it. So, it's not something that we are aware that Lee and Maberry are doing, and we're pretty confident they're not.
Okay.
Yeah. You're welcome. So, talking about growing into the system we want to be, so we did do the survey of our parents and staff, and I thought the survey was pretty revealing. And so, the point of tonight is, you know, to publicly show the results of the survey, but most importantly for me as superintendent, it's to get guidance from the board tonight. I think Michael, a couple of meetings ago, asked that the committee as a whole have discussions around the cellphone policy, and the school board agreed. So, the policy committee itself has been doing actionable items that would get us to a place where we could rebuild the policy. And part of it was the survey, part of it is upcoming visits that Tom and the chair is going to do along with Todd Allen in visiting schools, and of course, part of it is listening to where the community is. So, the survey itself, I thought, was pretty revealing. So, I put it in this context. Two surveys went out from the middle school, and Al's heard the story, and so I'll just say it again, because I think it's an important piece. Two surveys went out from the middle school, you know, virtually in the same timeline, not necessarily concurrent. One was on the competency work, and one was on cell phones. So, we had 51 responses from the same parents that were received over 800 responses from. But, you know, as Denise is absolutely right in saying, and she said to me many times, this is also a K through four, as well as a five-through-eight survey, but we had 800 responses on anything. That's significant, and I think that this particular issue has certainly been an important issue. You know, at first, when Keith came and talked to me, I thought it was an interesting concept, a small group of parents, an advocacy group. And then, you know, as this issue has had more airtime, we've seen more and more traction from the greater community. So, in any context, nothing is ever unanimous, of course. We live in a, you know, a really intellectual community, and so people will have opinions that go in the spectrum, but interestingly enough, unlike I like or don't like, in this community, they're very intellectual about why they support a direction or why they don't support a direction. To me, if I were going to summarize the surveys in a nutshell, and then open it up for your discussion, there's clearly an interest from those who responded to the survey, which would represent about 50% of the total K-through-eight population, that our current policy needs to change, and it needs to change to be more restrictive. That's what I got out of all of this, and I'm sure in your conversation, there's specific things that you'll all point out, but essentially, that's what I read into this survey. So, rather than elaborate and go through this item by item, I think the more important piece as superintendent is to listen to the seven of you, as well as the student rep, talk about your feelings related to this issue, guidance from me, because, you know, quite frankly, I'm ready to write a draft. I just want to make sure the draft I write is the consensus of this group, and then when you get it back, there'll be editing and conversation, and then I'll go back and rewrite it, because that's the process. But I just wanted to make sure that you have time to have this discussion, and as thoroughly as you want, so that I know what your marching orders are in terms of leaving tonight.
Just before we get started, is this survey going to be made available to everybody, the results, including the comments?
You know, I didn't see anything in the comments that I thought was offensive in any way. If anybody saw something that was, then I would probably exclude that. So, I'd have to go through the comments again, but most of the comments were pretty straight-on.
I just wondered. I mean, it's a document that's going to inform us whether that should be available to everybody.
Unless they take a shot at a person.
I didn't see any of that.
And I didn't see anything like that, then the comments can be part of the public record.
Okay. Denise?
And just for folks that are sitting there, who may, I'm just going to say, in terms of the overall survey results, no cell phones allowed on the bus or at school, roughly four, I'm going to round it, 14%. No cellphone use allowed during school hours, 30, actually, 31%. No cellphone use unless with express permission from a school adult, was 19%. And continue the current practice of allowing cellphone use during lunch recess or with adult permission was 35%.
So, it's the teachers, right?
Nope, this was the student. This was the parent, not the student. A student would have been interesting. This was the parent. The teacher survey was more skewed to continue the current practice, I believe I have here. But for me, what this means, and if you kind of divide it in half, like the two above are basically saying really pretty restrictive, either no cellphone use or no cellphone use during school hours, versus the other two that are more permissive, it's about half. It really is about half and half, and what that says to me is I agree that there is a significant percentage of our parents that do want to see some change. I personally think it was unfortunate that we didn't tease out the elementary versus middle, because I think, you know, my question is, is whether, if we did, you know, would we see that really skewed towards the elementary school saying, "No way," and the middle saying, "Yes." But just looking at what we've got, because that's what we have, you know, I can certainly see that there's definitely enough, and certainly from the comments and everyone who's spoken here, that there is definitely enough interest in changing our policy to some extent, but I also do not see an overwhelming mandate to just ban them completely. So, you know, from my perspective, is I think we need to figure out something that makes sense, that is probably more restrictive than what we have now. But, you know, I certainly couldn't, myself, just speaking for myself, based on all the information we have and the comments, and the number of parents who said, "No, I want my child to have a cellphone at school, because, you know, I need to contact them, or an emergency comes up, or what have you." You know, I could not support a total ban.
So, just quickly, not talking about the issue, but I don't think I agree with how you presented the results.
Okay.
To me, 35.41% of 706 said continue the current practice. To me, that means that 64.6% don't want the current practice continued, and the kind of flip side, which I think you were including in it's okay for cell phones, are saying no cellphone use unless with express permission from a school adult. So, I would really include that in the no's, so I think it's actually more of a 65-35 split. And when we look at the teachers, with 65 respondents doing it the same way, we're getting that same 65-35 split. 65% of teachers are saying no cell phones whatsoever, or only when asked for permission and granted permission, 35 are saying keep it the way it is. So, I read the data different, and certainly talk about the merits of it, yes or no, but I think it's important to present the data with our different perspectives respecting how you presented it.
Okay. Jay?
I just want to go back to the idea of publishing the survey results, specifically the comments. There is a comment on line 28 where a parent, actually, line 27, where a parent lists their name and phone number offering to help us.
Yeah, well, we would edit out people's telephone.
Well, and I guess I just want to, I think with a survey, you want people to be candid, and there's a, I think, there's an implied trust. I don't have a problem with publishing the results, but we weren't explicit in launching the survey in saying, "The results that you provide will be published." So, chances are, folks wouldn't mind, but I worry that we didn't establish that. So, I just, you know, people may, if we want to continue this high rate of return on a survey, I think we should honor anonymity to a degree.
We'll go through it and eliminate telephone numbers and names.
Well, but also, there could be content in here that perhaps people could, you know, be identified by, even if their name and number isn't in there. So, I'm just a little uncomfortable publishing sort of the narrative survey results that people sent us, given that we did not tell them that that would be published. That's just offering that up.
Okay. Other reaction?
It's been published.
It's on already?
It's part of the board's packet.
Oh, it's part of the packet. Okay.
Thank you, Michael.
Good point.
So, we probably need to go back and take...
So, we need to make sure that we get at least the identifying information out.
I used my mobile device to find out.
It's an awful big mobile device, Michael.
Just my sense of, I thought it was extraordinary, the comments, you know, the fact we had 400 comments, 28 pages of fine print to go through, and I think what that did is it gave some sense of nuance that just the categories didn't give. And it seemed to me that it kind of indicated, I think I'd agree with Kenny, that there is a consensus to restrict, you know, the sense that the policy's too open right now. I think, you know, some people are not bothered by it, but I think there's a general sense that it has to, we have to have a tighter policy than that. There is a general sense that, you know, not to have access, not to have your cellphone, not to bring your cellphone to school, I think people would be reluctant, you know, there's no, and I think there's a sense that to monitor in the bus is probably impractical, because, I mean, you'd have to hire a monitor for every bus, you know. So, it says, you know, it says that there's kind of an area of, you know, there's an area of like kind of extremes, and then there's kind of an area where there is some disagreement. And I thought it was interesting, reading the comments, that you don't see parents saying, "Gee, my kid has to have a cellphone, because he should be playing games at recess," or, you know, "on the cellphone," or "my kid should be on public media at recess." Really, the only reason that was given to have access consistently, and we see if we agree, was, "I need to arrange pickup times for my kids," you know. And, you know, so that's pretty much, and there wasn't a lot of sense that I believe that, you know, the cellphone is really useful in the classroom, that parents saying that either. So, it's almost like that was the one consistent, persistent reason why parents said that. And I'd be interested in how other schools handle that, because you can imagine that, you know, pickup, there is some kind of convenience that that causes, and how... So, it didn't seem to me that, it seemed to me that you kind of restrict, you know, it kind of creates a kind of a consensus, you know, within, you know, there's a kind of agreement in these comments, as I see it. And certainly, an agreement would be to restrict the use of cell phones, perhaps either totally or for this one aspect of convenience. That's kind of what I saw as kind of the center of those comments. Yeah.
So, Tom, I...
So, Tom, I completely agree with you, and I was trying to get beyond the numbers as well, and to try to parse out. And it seemed to me that people who were asking for cellphones, and I think one of the people spoke tonight, safety was a concern, right? So one of our tasks is to decide whether or not that's really a legitimate concern. As you mentioned, there was that convenience of being able to notify your parents. And then the third thing, and I think our speaker also noted, it's a parent's prerogative. So that's another issue, I think, for us to parse out. Never did I see in the comments, and maybe I missed some, was, "There's an educational value to having the cellphone at school." It was really along those three lines. And then the parents who spoke against cellphones talked how it undermined kind of the educational goal of the school, and interfered because of it being a distraction, and kids were losing focus, as well as the mental health issue of the added anxiety, stress, the impact it had on social relations and developing social relations. So I kind of saw our goal as a board to kind of look at that area of concerns. I mean, do our kids need cellphones if there's a safety issue? Do, as you said, is there another way for convenience? But I think also, and Al, you've said this, and I think we heard from speakers, we do need to make it clear that we are providing the technology needed for students to learn, and that everybody has the technology as needed, and it shouldn't be dependent on what a parent thinks about a kid having a cellphone, or whether a family could afford a cellphone. And I think we need to bring our district to that technology level, no matter which way we go on this issue.
Denise?
Just to clarify, and again, I want to clarify, I wasn't saying that, you know, that we shouldn't do anything. I think I read that middle one a little differently in terms of only with express permission, because to me, that could be interpreted as in class, as education, so maybe it was the way I read it. But I'm not, I want to be clear, I'm not saying, you know, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do something. But on one page alone, I'm just looking at one page, and we do have twenty-eight pages of comments, and I want to say thank you to all the parents that did take the time to write comments, and I read every single one. On one page alone, there's six comments saying they want their kids to have phones for emergency purposes. So, you know, and then there's, it's not just a convenience, some of it is their, their number of comments that were saying, not for the kids to contact the parent, but the parent to contact the child. So I'm not saying that we don't need to change the policy, I believe we do need to change the policy, I want to be clear about that. But I do not think that a total ban, complete ban, is what I'm seeing in this. I think, you know, we need to obviously make more restrictions and somehow figure that out. But on this one page alone, there were like six comments of people saying they want their kids to have the phones for emergency purposes, so.
So, when I thought about this, the first starting point is, what are you using technology in your, in the classroom? I mean, that's, I mean, and when we, when we last left off, my image was of Bill Sullivan pushing that card around the middle school. And when he did that, it lends itself this idea that somehow we have a shortage of technology in our district, that we are not able to provide adequately what students need to meet their daily requirement. So to me, I'm like, okay, and I know we have approved leases, and we've added stuff, so the starting question is, what technology do we have, and how is it used in the classroom? That's a good starting point. The second one, actually, to the computer person who's coming, I got your comment, clearly best practice is a managed device. I mean, I don't want to have you not have the device, but I want what's on the device to be putting you on task with what you're doing. I mean, things that, like, games and other things that are not part of the curriculum or part of what you, we're using are, have no place. So, in that framework, during the actual classroom time, the question is, where are we moving with technology? What are we providing? What does the district have? How do we build that into the technology strategic plan, which is where we're going? In terms of the daily use during the time of the day, I think clearly, is using a cell, is me saying to you, "Hey, grab whatever, we don't have enough, so therefore, grab a device that's unrestricted, or unfettered, or has potentially no, you know, use in our class, we need you to use that." I don't think that's a good way to go. I think it clearly should be a managed way. In terms of, I've heard, actually this morning, and it turns out, it seems to be as you get older, moving from middle school, particularly to high school, that, and especially my kids now of college, their preferred mode of conversation with you is texting, and they like to be able to schedule emergency meetings, you know, "Can you pick me up? I forgot my saxophone," whatever. So I think, how do we build that in? I mean, so I'm saying, and the idea that you cannot bring a cellphone to school, I don't think that's a particularly great idea. I think for some kids, they really use that. So the question is, I don't think that you should have that during the day, how do we manage during the school day, whatever electronic device you have? At the end of the day, or wherever it is, there's going to be this communication period when you're not in a classroom, that you do need to contact parents, how does the policy deal with that? So, again, it's twofold, managing your devices during the day, but second of all, again, looking at our technology plan, do we have enough devices? What type of devices do we have? I mean, even when somebody was saying, "Bring an iPad," well, if you bring an iPad, that is, that you don't manage what's on the iPad-
Right.
-it's no different than bringing in your cellphone.
Right.
So, or your laptop, or whatever it is. So whatever device we're having in there, and I mean, as I look towards kids now, clearly word processing, everything seems to now be moving to the cloud, using Google Docs and all that. So you really kind of want the kids to have a seamless transition between what they're doing in school, what they're going, using at home. I also like the idea that they really begin to be trained and familiar with what device they have, and as they grow in terms of their needs, that we're making sure that they're growing in terms of what device they're using. So, that's my two cents.
Jim?
So I think Al brings up really an important point, a number of important points, I just want to bring the board up to speed on where we've been and where we want to go. When we did the accreditation report at the high school level, the high school expressed in their concerns that they needed a bigger voice in how technology is used in the classroom. And that resonated with Suzanne, it resonated with me. But I also want to go back to Sarah Falwell's comment, and because it's important to understand the history of this. So ten years ago, well, I'll do my history, six years ago, when I came into the district, I came from Maine, the one-to-one solution in Maine was universal. I thought coming into Oyster River, one-to-one was a perfect solution for this district, sharp youngsters, supportive parents, great communities, and it was, it was like, there was a group of people at that point in time who didn't want to even hear the word "technology." And so as I opened up the idea of a conversation around one-to-one, it just flopped big time in the district. So I want to go back to Jay's tenure, because it goes back a little bit longer than mine, and trying to just base where, how we got here. So Jay, as a principal, was very technologically interested in providing his kids at the middle school access to technology. The district was not in a place intellectually, philosophically, monetarily, where it was interested in going down a path of providing what I would call adequate technology, which is what Al's referring to. And so at the time, ten years ago, the middle school was actually being written up and praised as a school system that brought your own device in order to provide access to the internet. But now we're at a different place in the district, you know. What we've done in the district is we've stabilized and supported technology for the last five and a half years. And by that, I mean, the history of this is, the district was sort of the Wild West six years ago. If a teacher wanted a device, they got it. If another teacher next to them didn't want a device, nobody cared. And I don't mean that in a demeaning way, it was just not a priority for the district at that point. So as I've listened to the parents, you know, I've listened to Keith, and I've now listened to Al and others on the board, the district is in a completely different place now than it was six years ago. There is, we've built a demand for the technology, and the way that we did it is we unified platforms and expectations. So under Josh, we built a rich infrastructure. And through Josh, we whittled down a myriad of devices to two or three that are supported. And under Josh, the technology is robust. But we never got to the place where we could get to the one-to-one discussion, quite frankly, until this discussion really started taking traction. And I want to applaud John's comments, I've actually used them several times, since he first presented the idea of developing a policy that talks about personal devices and school-sponsored devices. And that changes the dynamic, because when we're providing the device, we're also federally required to filter those devices. Now, can clever kids get themselves in trouble even under a filtered device? Absolutely. But the vast majority of the students will use the devices the way they're intended, they're respectful, and they're courteous. My experience in Maine has shown that. We had one-to-one solution in Maine for twenty years before I showed up in the district. So I think that as we're talking about this, it is relatively easy, in quotation marks, for us to become more restrictive with personal devices, and at the same time, build a strategic plan around what we should be doing, which is providing the devices for all students. And the, you know, the rationale for that is equity, equity, and more equity. There are youngsters who cannot afford devices. We help them, but we can't provide them a device. And at the same time, our teachers are demanding more and more of what we have. So if our teachers were presenting tonight, they would be saying, you know, "It's all well and good that you have the laptops on carts, you have iPads on carts, but the just isn't enough of them. We're competing constantly for the devices we want to use in our curriculum." So again, again, in terms of Al's comments, I want you to know that from the point that the high school expressed their desire for more technology, the middle school almost did it concurrently, and the elementary schools have as well. And while this conversation is going on, I instituted a teacher-rich technology committee so that in the fall, we'd be able to address the very issues that Al's brought up. So it is intermingled, and I appreciate the fact that Al brought it up, and I wanted to kind of bring you guys all up to speed, so you know that we're not sitting back just waiting for this to happen, we're trying to be proactive, as you are, in terms of trying to deal with personal devices versus school devices.
Other comments about the survey? One question, you know, that I think we probably should consider is, what other information do we need to have to go forward to formulate a policy? Like, I'm looking forward to the trips to these schools, because I'd be interested in how they handle things like, you know, emergencies, or if, you know, do you create, like, suppose you had somebody who's, has a, you know, severe anxiety, and maybe you need to contact a parent during the day, you know, do you carve out some exceptions? I was thinking, in terms of emergencies, it would seem to me, in an emergency, do you want a kid to be on the cellphone, or do you want that kid to contact an adult in the school? You know, and just how, you know, like, I think we could talk through some, how some of these things are handled. That's one thing I would like to see how schools, not just to read a policy, I'd like to see how schools, you know, do that. Are there other things we need to do, to talk to, to know, to, you know, in preparation for, you know?
I was just gonna say, like, when you go there, look at exactly the issue we just said, that Jim was talking about, is like, personal device versus a managed device. What do they have? And, you know, so, what are they using in terms of classroom technology? How do they handle the sheer request for usage of it? That's the first part. I'm interested in how they're handling, in essence, going to one-on-one technology, have they done that? But then again, like, the managed, the personal device, how do they handle the obvious thing about, like, "Okay, I want to call my mom," or that kind of thing? Are they waiting to the end of the day? Do they have to go to the office? Or how do they just handle that? Because I think, I mean, that's the exception to the rule, but I think we should probably know with the exception of the rule, how they handle it.
I actually think that there's a lot more parents contacting the kids.
Yeah.
So that is what, I think, you know, how much is the office staff having to handle constant, because it's a different world now. I mean, you know, it's just a different world, and kids are way busier, they have way more activities than previously, you know. I even think when my son went to school, you know, his schedule was the same every day. My guess is a lot of kids these days, their schedules are not the same every day, and parents' schedules aren't the same every day. And I don't think it's just the parents contacting the kids, I really think, I mean, I don't think it's just the kids contacting the parents. I really think it's the parents wanting to be able to contact their kids. So I think that's an important thing to try and find out, because is the phone ringing off the hook all day long, continuously, because we live in a different time than we did even, you know, I mean, we don't have to go back a lot of years, and to say that it's really changed a lot, you know. And people are more afraid, and they want their kids to have their phones, because they know we live in a world that has changed. And so, again, I'm not saying that the kids necessarily will use their devices or whatever, their cellphones during the day, but I don't think that there'd be the support to say, "You have to leave them in your locker all day and not touch them, and they're in your locker," you know, or that, leave them at home, for sure wouldn't go over. I just don't believe that.
Kenny?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
So just, the other thing, and, so we've heard about the creep, right? So, the creep, it never used to be a middle school problem.
Okay, yeah.
And now it's a middle school problem. So looking at districts, I mean, this is going to be an elementary school problem soon. It's not as if all of a sudden, with the way our configuration is, that, you know, it only starts at fifth grade. So I think maybe hearing other schools, what they're experiencing as far as that. And Denise, to your point, I agree completely, but I think part of, part of our decision is going to be to, is that parents' need to always be in contact with their kid, even though that is the parent and it's their kid, is that really a good thing? And is that something that we should be, you know, something that we should use to guide us? I mean, I think, we talk about overscheduling. I don't think all that overscheduling comes from the kids. And I think part of what we do as a school district, and I agree that we should be setting policies, and we shouldn't be following the way a public drifts, but I think we should consider what's really in the best interests of kids, what's really going to make things better. And I think there is some science to that. And I think when kids have more independence, when they have to make decisions, when they're on their own, that's how they learn resiliency. And, I mean, I hear from UNH people, kids are going to college and they can't fend for themselves, because their parents are involved in every aspect of their lives. So I think, I think we need to also be, take a look from that high level, and really think philosophically what's best, and not just respond to public sentiment. I think that's, it's very easy hearing public say, "Let's do this, do that," and school board just rolls to that. But I think our job is really to think what's best and get through that noise. So, and that's just me, but that's how I feel.
Michael?
So I guess, looking at the survey specifically, I think there are kind of three areas of focus that we've been touching on. There's the communication from home, that's coordination, there is educational purpose, which we've touched on, and there's the emergency use side of things. It sounds like there's general consensus, and I wholeheartedly agree, that if there's an educational need for technology, the district should be supplying it. There is absolutely no way, regardless of how many students have devices, to provide consistency across the class, across the entire classroom, without a district supplying a device. a device. I think that in addition to the pervasiveness of technology, along with that has come, had come a reduction in the cost of that technology. And I think that is now something that is affordable. And that's going to require some work to figure out what that exactly looks like. It might not be one-to-one. I don't know that every single kindergartner needs a tablet, but...
I'd be pleased to know that's not the recommendation.
Yeah.
I was a little worried when we kept saying one-to-one, so. In terms of the edu, in terms of the emergency use side of things, I hear that feedback in the survey. And I think that the response to that, at least in part, probably needs to be some education of families and of students as part of our emergency preparedness activities. I know there was a shelter-in-place drill at Mohermet today. I don't know if there was a component of that that involved, hey, you know, we're not going to talk about, we're not going to, there are reasons to not, to not share this from students that have cell phones in Mohermet, but not that many. But as part of our other emergency preparedness drills, how do we share the importance of that with our students? How do we share the reasoning for that with parents who are expecting that? And why that is a component of keeping their children as safe as possible and part of the first mission of the school district? So I hear that feedback, but I think that the response is multifaceted there. In terms of communication with home and scheduling, I guess I would question, I understand that. I have kids already that in elementary school that have different schedules every day. And I don't think it's our place as a board to try to necessarily influence the overscheduling phenomenon directly. Families are going to choose the activities that are right for their kids. That said, very few of those things are changes in schedule that need to be addressed immediately at exactly 1:30 in the afternoon. Those things can almost always wait till the end of the school day and adjust accordingly. Students probably not leaving anywhere until the end of the school anyhow. And if they are, they're just going to go through the office anyway. So I think that if those communications really are urgent, asking them to go through the school office is probably reasonable.
Dan?
Just, you both made excellent points. I think as a school board, our greatest strength in this conversation is to focus on, you know, really thinking through purposefully the role of technology in our curriculum, you know, mitigating the negative influences that we, I think, understand pretty well. I worry a little bit about getting into the area where we are subjectively trying to influence, you know, parent access, scheduling, these sorts of things. I think we're better served to really focus on demonstrating how devices either support or distract and need to be limited during the school day, bell to bell. And allowing parents, you know, the leeway to make the decisions that they feel are right for their kids outside of that time period. However, I do think it's important for us, if parents feel like whatever decision we end up making somehow restricts their access to their child that they've become accustomed to or they feel is critically important. I think we need to reinforce that we do believe that they should be able to communicate with their child in an emergency due to a schedule change. And we will find ways to make that work for them. You know, it might not be a text in the middle of class or, you know, that kind of thing. But we're not saying it's not important. It's just, we're not perhaps willing to broadly allow device access to make that happen. So I feel like that's perhaps where we're going.
Denise?
And that wasn't what I was suggesting. I mean, I could see it as a five minutes before lunch or five minutes at the end of the day. I mean, I wasn't saying, again, that kids should just be able to, you know, full, we are definitely talking about restricting it. But I also am saying you can't turn it on until you leave the building for the day. To me, you know, if there was a change, they wouldn't know it until it's too late. Maybe they were, the change was they were supposed to take the bus home and now it's too late because the bus has already left. So my point is, is that, you know, maybe it's got to be like a five-minute timeframe at the end of the day or, you know, right at lunchtime or whenever, just so that they can check to see, did their parents send them a text? Is there something going on that they need to be aware of? Again, it would be interesting to hear, do other schools do something like that? Or do they handle these kinds of things differently? But other than that, I agree, you know, we can't, we can't, you know, I wouldn't ever think that it was appropriate for a student in the middle of a class, say, oh, wait, I got a text from my, you know, that's not appropriate, you know? But to say that the kids can't have access at all the entire school day, maybe too much. You know, maybe they need to be able to have a five-minute break at some point where they can do that appropriately.
Let's have Hannah.
I personally think, while the idea of having like a five-minute time that you could check your phone during the school day, sounds great in theory, then you have children sitting in class like waiting for that five minutes where they can check their phone, that five minutes where they can check their game and play it for like four minutes before lunch, which I think could introduce a whole new issue. I think I agree with what Michael said about having students check their phone at the end of the day. If it's an emergency that they need to be dismissed early, then that should go through the office. I think a lot of saying that, parents saying that like they want their children to not have their phone during the school day, but saying that they want their child to have their phone just in case of emergency kind of contradicts each other, which while both of them are great points, it just, it's hard to work around both of them.
Brian?
Hannah stole my thunder.
She does that, she's so good.
That's exactly what I was going to say. But I mean, I prefer to, I would prefer to see from the first bell to the last bell, not see anything. And like I said, if there is an important message that has to go to a student, do a look. When I was a kid, and when we were all kids, you called the office and you got it relayed to the classroom where that person is. If I, I'd prefer to see managed devices so we have more control over their exposure to what they need to do. You know, as I said, if they need that as part of the technology, that should be our responsibility. But I still can't see at the middle school level why they should have it from the first bell to the last bell. I can't see, I think this five minutes is even too much leeway in the sense that when is that five minutes there and who's really monitoring that five minutes? You know, I mean, it's got to be all, and this is, it's such a tough thing, it kind of almost has to be all or nothing, you know? Either just keep it the way it is or take it away because it just gives too much leeway. And that age group, if you give them an inch, they're going to take, they're going to take a foot of yard, you know? And it's, my kids do it. So, you know, I told them, hey, five more minutes on the iPad, then you're heading to bed. And all of a sudden, it's 15 minutes later and I gotta go out and remind them. Same thing. I mean, it's anecdotal, but, you know, I think a lot of kids, a lot of kids would do that, so. But I prefer the idea of us as a district controlling it in the sense of a managed device versus, you know, freedom to go wherever they want. Because the problem is, even if you let them use it at lunch, there's so much cyberbullying going on, they're just going to take that time to go after at that particular time. Just cut it out during the whole day. If they can't be on it at all during the day, you're not going to have that back and forth going on. And if it is, then obviously you know the kid's using this thing. And lastly, no matter what we do, I think we have to make it clear to the parents what that policy is and what the, not only that, what would the, the other end of it look like as far as punishment? You know, what is going to be, you know, if your child is caught with this phone, first offense, maybe you take the phone away for a day. I mean, I don't know, you'd have to work through that through the policy committee. But, you know, second offense, you know, they lose it, you call their parents, the parents have to come get the phone, you know? And it just gets steadier until they just get no phone whatsoever. But it has to be a strict policy. I think it has to be clear, and I honestly, it's something that has to be, there be, I'm sure they have an intro night for the middle school when all the kids, parents come in for the new incoming kids. This is our cell phone policy. Please be aware of it, you know, amongst all the other policies. But be aware of it, and if you have to even have them acknowledge it in some form, I think you should do that too. I mean, it's because I think that you have to have the buy-in from the parents, they have to be aware. Because I know if, even if you take away their phones during the day, as soon as they get home, they may let them be on a device all night. Who knows? I don't know. You know, everybody's different, so.
Kenny? Just putting forward, so already kind of a mechanism has been set up where, Tom, you're going to visit some other schools and maybe with...
And Brian's also going to go, so.
So that, you know, so not to upend that process. But what I'm thinking is maybe we can have kind of an estimated date where you'll come back, report to the board, because it seems like we're, some of the comments we're doing now are trying to nail down the specifics of a policy. But I'm saying, let's maybe, let's just hold off, why don't you do the research? But I think we should have this done in a kind of a set time. Come back, make the presentation. We as a board then could set kind of the guidelines that we would like. And then if it's okay with the board, have the policy committee try to craft the language that reflects the sentiment that we've agreed on at the board table. And then the policy committee brings that forward and then we discuss it at the board table and make adjustments. So rather than getting in the weeds now of five minutes, 10 minutes, whatever, I think let's, how about if we just stick to that kind of process?
Okay. And this discussion's kind of given a sense of like, what kinds of still wrinkles do we want to look at or issues would you look at, like how they manage, say, some of the concerns that came up in the survey? I mean, if they, if they do, if it's an absolute ban, do they, does this issue ever come up? If it doesn't come up, that's interesting. If it does come up, how do they manage it? You know, are there any exceptions for, you know? And how would they handle that? You know, does this stuff come through the main office? How does that work? So, so I think I have a sense of kind of some of the things to look for.
And it never hurts to get information. We make a better informed decision the more information we have. So I feel good about doing that.
I would just say, so I think, I mean, us handling the policy is, you know, clearly what we do. But I think in terms of broader philosophically, and maybe this is where the PTOs can come in, I mean, again, I'm like a terrible person to talk to about cell phones. I think I was the last person in my family that had a cellphone. I actually considered it a, you know, point of pride that I couldn't be reached all the time. And it's like, so, by way, most people get really, really, really annoyed by that. My wife says, oh, you know, it's amazing you think you have that luxury. But the broader philosophical point that this all speaks to is that what's occurred right now is everybody has conditioned themselves to be continuously connected. There is very little time that people, when they're asleep, but where they disconnect. And so I think that is a broader thing that parents can share amongst themselves. How do you deal with disconnecting or, you know, where you're not continuously having to know everything, that everybody's doing, what's going on in the world? Is there time that you can pull away from that? And so I think, again, that's a discussion really that parents have amongst themselves. And, you know, the PTOs, you know, are looking as you get to like middle school and high school of better ways to engage. That's a really good conversation to bring amongst yourselves, I think.
So I think, I think we have a sense of, you know, we'll gather, you know, information about the visits. I, you know, I'm not sure whether that'll be the next meeting, but we could kind of like stage it out and, and set up a sequence with, it'll take us to a decision point, I think we said in, around in May.
We thought the second meeting in April, we would be in a situation to at least put a, what I would call a rough, not even a first draft, but a rough draft in front of the body. And you guys can pivot at that point and then we would send it back to policy for refinement. And then that refinement would be the first, so that would get us into May. So within the timeline that we had talked about before Christmas, we should, I would hope have something that the board could support by either the last meeting in May or the first meeting in June.
Do you need a motion to direct the content of that?
No, I think you guys were pretty clear. You know, you know, it's always, it's always, usually Tom asks me, do you have enough direction? I say, yep, it's as clear as mud. But tonight, it's more clear than mud because it's very clear the board wants to have a more restrictive policy than we currently have. And we, and Todd and Brian and Tom are going out to visit these schools, they'll get your questions addressed. And, you know, once we have that information, then I think we can start putting together a policy that reflects the conversation tonight. So I think we already have direction, it's just, we had direction to work on it, but I was concerned I didn't have the collective voice of this body to go forward. And now I'm pretty, it's pretty clear I do. So I know what that voice is now.
I guess my concern is about the timeline that you laid out. And I think that after we have a workable draft to start to chew on, there's also going to be an interest in some community engagement on what that says and how it says it. And sometimes the process of working through that takes a meeting or two as well. And I work on it, it's not getting this much...
Yeah, I appreciate that, Michael. I wasn't thinking that we would have a forum or informational session before we had the draft. I was thinking we would have it once the board has made its decision. You've got tons of, you've got 800 opinions already. A forum is going to bring out, you know, probably the same people who've been talking to us with a few people who would be against it, because generally, that's how it works. I think you have plenty of public input at this point. I think the more important piece is the communication as to what the policy, the new policy is and be able to stand in front of the community and address their questions once we have the policy. Because I think you've got tons of public input here to go forward with.
Okay.
That's how I would see it, but I'm open to other suggestions.
Well, I guess I think that it's really important that we don't go past that second meeting in April then for a discussable draft.
I think we're on track for that.
Yeah, I mean, within, I mean, hopefully, but I mean, if it, you know, the idea was we'd have it done by fall and we're talking mid-April, if it runs to like the first of May, I mean, I'm not going to put a restriction that if, you know, we have a snow day or something, whatever it may be. But it's, it's in queue. Anytime you do a policy anyway, it's going to take two meetings for a first draft, a second draft. I would assume that, you know, I don't know how the first one, you come in, but it's a couple of meetings. So I envision it as not even a first draft. It's a, it's a rough draft. So at the very least, we'll spend six weeks on getting to the finals. I think that would, and if you need an extra two weeks, it still just puts us in June. So we'll be in pretty good shape. I think we can get a draft in front of you for discussion by the second meeting in April. I'm confident of that based on tonight's conversation.
I think it's also important that either as part of that same policy or as a part of an attached policy, that we do have an acceptable use policy and a code of conduct that will cover the use of all, both personal and district devices in all school settings, including bus rides and extracurriculars. And I think that that language needs to be age, tailored by age, that there should probably be more than one version of that so that it can be communicated with younger students as well as...
I think, and I think the other important part of any policy is enforceable. So we have to be careful about doing something that, then we spend a lot of administrative time dealing with when, when we know it's going to be like a crazy idea, like banning cell phones on buses. The bus drivers are driving, they're not going to have time to discipline kids who have their cellphone out. But if the rule is there's no cellphone out, that's the infraction at the end of the drive, they'd pass that infraction on to the principal to deal with because they need to be driving. So I think those are the kinds of things that I get concerned about when we get into absolutism, because nothing is ever absolute. We have to get a policy that is enforceable, so.
Well, I'm not saying that, I think...
I know you were, Michael, I was just saying that for the audience.
I don't think we have that today. And what are the behavior standards? And what is the code of conduct? What is the expected behavior around devices when you're doing a school district activity, whether it's riding the bus or watching a football game?
A good, good example of that is we actually experimented with the idea of wireless on the bus for our athletes who are taking trips that were over an hour. And the feedback from the students on that was fabulous. First of all, they couldn't get on social media because they were on our device and it was already restricted. And the feedback from the student athletes on that bus trip was phenomenal. They got a lot of work done, they were very appreciative. And so we have experimented in a very tentative way, like toe in the water kind of way, with the idea of devices on long trips. They were our devices, or I shouldn't say they weren't, they were not our devices, but they were on our system and so they were, they could not get into social media. So that's how we've been dealing with the bus issue. But that was just like we were seeing whether we could even make it work.
Just from a procedural standpoint and hearing you say, school visits, rough draft, board discussion, policy committee, should we as a board designate Tom and Brian to be the ones involved in this, so like when we have a negotiating committee, just for, you know, that formal sake of giving, giving them the approval that the whole board endorses this?
Well, I think that the work rightfully belongs with the policy. Well, I think that the work rightfully belongs with the policy committee. I mean, I think Tom and Brian have taken on the data collection role, and, but I think the rough draft can certainly involve Tom and Brian, but I think it's, the rough draft, I'm not going to write a rough draft without an audience. My audience is the policy committee. So, you know, it's not for you guys necessarily to say, oh, this is what we should be doing or not, but does this make sense based on the conversation we just had with the school board? And then that rough draft would come to the full body, and we'd have that same conversation. So I, I still think the policy committee is, is the right vehicle.
So, but your point was like, if, if Brian and I are going out and gathering this information, should we be officially?
Officially designated by the board to say.
Would you be willing to make that motion?
Yeah, I, I just want to move that Tom and Brian have the approval of the board to go forth and help us gather information that they'll bring back to the board.
Okay, move by, it's a motion?
Yes, motion. I'm just moving that Tom and Brian have the board's approval to go forward and examine policies at other schools, visit other schools, and bring back their information and recommendations to the school board.
Okay. Is there a second?
Al.
Bell? Discussion? Call's favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, okay, we're official, Brian. Good.
Thank you, everyone, this was helpful.
I think, I think we have a roadmap, I think we're going to, I think, I think that was a good discussion. It's just, let's take a break right now. There's some other things to get into. Five minutes? Okay, could we get started? I'm wondering if, since Lisa Hupp is here to talk about the bus bit, and she's got to get up early tomorrow morning to get the buses out, whether we could take care of that the next thing, so you could take off?
Maybe she has to get the buses out early tomorrow.
Well. She's getting up early.
When did the buses go, is another question, yeah.
So, is that all right with everybody?
Sure.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, I guess we're looking for approval to move forward to purchase buses this year from WC Cressy, which would be Thomas Buses. And it was really a tough decision, because all the requirements were met. Our transmissions and engines really are serviced, warranty serviced at Liberty International. However, John Zotto, who maintains our buses, is in the process of becoming a satellite facility for the Freightliner slash Thomas Buses. So that puts it right in our backyard, as far as, you know, having to get them to warranty places. And they were also the lowest bid, so.
Can we get snow tires on buses?
Um, no, I think we just get meaty treads.
How about tank tracks?
So could we have a motion to approve this bus lease? Denise?
I motion to approve the bus lease as presented.
Moved by Denise, is there a second? Second by Brian. Further questions for Lisa? No? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, that's approved. So is that all that you need for today?
That's it for me.
Just so you know, Lisa gets up at 3:00 in the morning, just so she can call me at 4:30.
Okay.
Well, actually, I'm getting up at 3:00 tomorrow morning, so I can be at the garage to help get buses cleaned off if they're. But then I'll be calling him no earlier than 4:30, I promise.
Okay, good luck.
Yeah.
So, I'm trying to think, I think we're to the business administrator?
Yes, and I have provided you with a budget update for the current year. No concerns from my end. Things are actually ahead of where we were at this time last year, but it's still early. But I think we're going to finish with a balance.
We're ahead, in a good way, is that?
We're in a good way, yep, we are.
Okay.
Questions?
Still too early to feel comfortable?
Yeah, it's still a little early. We're just going through everything, I mean, yeah. Still, still pumping out the heat, too, so.
And the snow removal.
Snow removal, yeah. Good.
And then, and you'll, at another meeting, you'll get a sense of the, like, this way down the road, but the savings with the lower health increase, you can figure out?
Somewhere around $200,000.
So that'll be, figure that out, you know, how that impacts, if we want to do anything with that.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
We'll bring that back to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Student Center report?
All right, so, today was a very exciting day at the high school. The 11th graders took the SATs, and the 10th graders took the PSATs. While they were doing that, the 9th graders were, had what was called Wellness Day, so they went to a bunch of stations that they had, they learned about nutrition with planting foods and food preparation, group building, expressions through role play, art therapy, mindfulness, learning about stress and its impact on the brain. So that was, I'm sure it was very fun for all the freshmen to go through all those stations and have a fun day to learn some real world things in groups. And the seniors were involved in community service days. So we had students go to Barrington Elementary, Mast Way, MoHerriman, they did beach cleanup. Some kids went to a food pantry, Relay for Life, working at the Echo Thrift Shop, Great Bay Kids Company, Carriage Hill, and some others stayed on campus, working with the freshmen to do the Wellness Day. And some helped get ready for spring by shoveling the fields and tennis courts. And I know that was a lot of fun for the seniors. I know shoveling the field, they ended up more building a bunch of igloos around the field, because they didn't know where to put the snow, which I know was very fun for them. I was at MoHerriman, where we played badminton in the PE classes, and we went and sang with all the kids in Mr. Lee's class, who wrote a song. We had one boy who played the guitar in the big circle of little kids, and they all sang with him, which was one of the cutest things I've ever seen. And then spring sports have started. Baseball just had tryouts, I know that. And then the yearbook is searching for photographs, if anybody wants to share any photographs of, that they want included in the yearbook, send them to Ms. Van Dyke. Yes, and also, it's been a blast being on the school board, and thank you all for being very welcoming and informative. It's been an awesome experience.
Any sense of what next year's going to be for you?
Possibly a gap year, and most likely going to University of Vermont.
Oh, okay.
Yes, well, at least next year, or in two years, depending on how the gap year goes.
Uh-huh. What would you, what do you think the gap year will be?
Hopefully, traveling abroad. It's still planning. Yeah, mostly going abroad, doing internships, and kind of working with the environment is my goal.
Well, we wish you the best. Thank you so much for being part of the board.
Thank you.
You should lobby us next year for more parking. It's always been her.
Of course, I'll always be there.
It's been her platform.
Okay, Josh?
Good evening, everyone, and right, right like that, we're back to technology. Short break. So I have two RFPs that went out, and one is for Internet connectivity for the district, and then the other one is all of our connections to Durham and out to Lee and Madbury for the two elementaries, and also to the transportation building. The, the costs fall right in line with what our budget is for next year. And again, this is through the E-Rate program, so we get a portion of this money back. So, if there's any questions, yes?
Is it, is dark fiber a brand name? What the heck is dark fiber?
So dark fiber is, is basically fiber optic cable. The internet provider can manage it and put equipment on either end and control the speed. If they give it to us dark, it's basically the cable, and then we buy the equipment to plug into that, and we pick the speed. So that's why there's such a big cost difference. It allows us to go a lot faster, because we already have all the equipment in place. We've had it for five years, so, so that's really the difference. It's either they make the connection and give us a speed, or we choose it. And so it gives us a little more flexibility, and as we grow, it's easier for us to grow. So, and of course, the price comparatively is a lot less, so.
There was only one bidder for the dark fiber?
Yes, because someone has to build that fiber out, and First Light is who we used five years ago. And so we're talking about fiber that they had to build up to 125, down 125, over by transportation, up by the safety complex, and over to Mast Way. And there's not a lot of businesses in there. So Consolidated, who used to be Fairpoint, isn't going to be running stuff out there. Comcast might, but I don't think they have the same, the infrastructure either. So, yeah, in that case, there was only one. The other ones bid either a leased, a leased lit service.
I just wonder if in the future, we should be looking for a longer term commitment, if we have a single.
Yeah, so, when we first did it, we looked at, they really pushed us for a 10-year commitment, but the, the pricing wasn't all that attractive. This is the second five year, so I doubt they have their initial investment back yet. But we've tried to keep it, when I worked with Sue, we've tried to keep it to the five year, and that way we have the flexibility, especially with technology. I mean, fiber typically is, is pretty good over time. But if we got into, some districts are going to 10 to 20, but if you start having problems, that's, that's a long time.
This is a five year?
This is a five year agreement.
I don't know how I would tell that from what I see here.
I have it on.
I'm glad to hear that.
My, so, so let me add that. So on the internet, it's a three-year commitment.
Okay.
And on the other one, it's a five-year commitment. Sorry for not adding that.
And are you choosing the dark fiber option?
Yes, that's what we'd like to do.
You only say First Light, but you don't say dark in the?
Yes, my apology, yep. Yeah, based on price, we went with that one.
So are there two approvals they're making?
Yes, please.
Okay. So could we have a motion, the first one is what, the internet?
For the internet service.
Internet service? Are there further questions on that one? No? Could we have a motion then to approve that purchase?
I'd move to approve the, the contract with First Light for internet service?
Moved by Michael, second by Brian. Further questions? No? All those in favor? Seven in favor, that's approved. The second is the, the wide area, so I'll move that out.
Move that we accept the bid offered for the wide area network fiber. It's a five-year lease, it's with First Light, and the price is $3,400 per month, and it's for dark fiber.
Moved by Kenny, is her second. Second by Denise. Questions on that? None? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. Those, both, both approved, so thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
I think I've mentioned in the past that the ACLU anticipates bringing suit against the state if Senate Bill 193 is passed, which is the voucher bill, which will divert essentially taxpayer money to parents who are going to either maybe homeschooling, or religious schools, or private schools. And I think, in particular, it's the issue of separation of church and state that anticipates probably 80% of this money will be going to religiously denominated schools. So the ACLU is going to bring, anticipates bringing suit, and is looking for school districts that will be part of that suit. One of the issues last time with the, when this came up before, and actually, John Lewis in Durham was the judge who made the ruling, you know, he ruled that, you know, is unconstitutional. to divert the money to religious schools, and then it was, the Supreme Court voted against, said that Bill Duncan, who was a plaintiff, didn't have standing. So I think the sense is that he needs to find school boards, school districts who will be affected by this, who will participate in the suit. Now, the first step for us would be to have a non-meeting at some point because we're having a meeting with a lawyer, you know, Jules is a lawyer, to just to talk about what that would involve. Then, if we would decide we want to take the next step, we would, you know, I would assume subsequently would vote, assuming the bill is passed, to become part of that suit. But this would kind of tell us what we'd be getting into. Now, so I said to him that, and I would bring it to the board to see if we wanted to proceed with having a non-meeting with him to see whether we wanted to become part of this possible lawsuit. So that's the extent of my conversation with him, and I think it's, you know, the kind of context of, so I guess the question for you is, should we plan, say, before one of our board meetings, to have, to meet with him in a non-meeting so he could tell us what would be involved in going forward with the suit? How you folks feel about that?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So would there be a cost to us to have this non-meeting with him? No?
No.
Okay.
No, no, I mean, he's, you know, and there's no cost, the way he explained, there's no cost to us at all. It's not a cost thing.
Okay.
Question? Kenny?
I'd like to see us set up that meeting, and that way, we'll be more informed and we could make a decision after we get that information.
Okay.
Yeah, so I would be in favor of that.
Could you make a motion then? Okay.
Sure. So I would move that we set up a non-meeting with the lawyer who's approached, just is wanting to talk to us about possibly joining a suit against the, it's SB?
Senate Bill 193.
SB 193. So I'd like to have that non-meeting.
Okay. Moved by Kenny is her second, second by Al. All in favor? Seven in favor? Okay, well, and I think, probably the way I was thinking we do this is maybe the people who normally do the manifest, normally do the manifest at 6:30, maybe find some other time to do that, and then we could use that 6:30 to 7:00 for the, for the non-meeting.
Is, we would just need to know which, which meeting? I mean, are we talking the next board meeting? Are we talking, so once we know that, then we know we can figure out the manifest thing?
Yeah, I think I have to contact him, see what his schedule's like, and see what I could set up.
Okay.
So, and then, we're not obligated, you know, if we decide we don't want to do it, we're not obligated to go forward with it, but it gives us information.
We'll make sure you have plenty of notice for the manifest.
Yep. Okay, where are we? So we have the, Bob said, do we have a vote?
Yeah, we've voted. Yep.
Okay, we have a set of contracts to approve. We have the administrator salaries. Todd Allen, Susan Kazwell, and Catherine Fleur. Jim, I don't know if you want to, like, say what principle you use to develop these salaries?
So this, the salaries that you're seeing tonight, a result of negotiations that occurred about five years ago with the ORAA to bring their salaries within parity, well, parity would be the wrong word, within the market for administrators in New Hampshire. So the discussion that happened at negotiations was that our teachers are paid in the top 10% of the state, and that the administrators at the time had lagged behind, and they had proposed that they be placed in the top 25% of the state. And at the time, the negotiating team for the board, though supportive of the request, did not feel comfortable jumping salaries that dramatically in a given year. And so, a process was established to bring our administrative staff into parity with their colleagues in the top quartile of the state. And, you know, so it's been five years, and we keep on inching away, closer and closer. So the other aspect of the salaries is the relative relationship of administrators vis-à-vis the responsibilities. So the example I would use, since she's in the room and David's in the room, Suzanne and David, high school principal, elementary principal, both have incredibly intense jobs. The high school principal, in addition, has many more after-school responsibilities and weekend responsibilities due to the activities of the students. And so, in relative terms across the state and across the country, you would normally see a high school principal make significantly more than an elementary principal for those reasons. So five years ago, like the technology we talked earlier about, there was no rhyme or reason to the salary schedules for administrators in the district. And so, through negotiations, we attempted to create relative parity with each other and that, based on job descriptions and responsibilities, and move them more equitably into the top quartile in the state in terms of pay because of the work they do and because of the performance of our students and because we felt it was the right thing to do vis-à-vis the teacher contracts. And we did not, we deliberately did not tie teacher salary into the teacher contracts. That was one of the proposals, but we decided the more economic move was to do it based on the market. And so, all these salaries have been carefully crafted to take into account the board's direction at the time and also the market.
So we have, I think, three sets of contracts to approve. Administrator salaries, it'd be Todd, Todd Allen, Susan Kazwell, Catherine Fleur. Could I have a motion to approve those salaries unless there are further questions for Jim? Denise?
I motion to approve the administrator contracts as submitted.
Moved by Denise is her second, second by Brian. Further questions for Jim?
This is a question, but more of a comment about the process. When I look at this, because we're not looking at or evaluating the individual administrators, I'm looking at the bottom line here and looking at the package of administrative salaries. And I think that's kind of, as a board, probably what we should be focused on here.
And I would be glad to do that in the future, Michael. I can do an aggregate proposal and work it that way if that's what the board desires.
So, I'm sorry, we have a motion in a second, right?
Yeah.
Are there other questions? All those in favor approving the administrator salaries, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, those are approved. Okay, we have the ORAA salaries. Questions about that? It seems like there's some equity, some equity jumps here. Is that, I thought, Andy, Mark, and Suzanne.
Yep, and that's absolutely right. And that goes along with the intent of the negotiations room from five years ago, renewed once now since then. And in Suzanne's case, as a brand-new principal last year, we bought her services less expensively than we would had she been a veteran. I think in the last two school years, she certainly proved her mettle, and I wanted to make sure that we lived to the letter of the agreement we made and brought her into parity with her peers. And the same would be the case for Andy. He was new, we brought him in less expensively than we would, a veteran, he's proved himself. And in Mark's case, it was just the adjustment that we had agreed to, to bring him in closer to Michael.
Okay. Denise?
I motion to approve the ORAA salaries as presented.
Moved by Denise is her second, second by Brian. Further questions? All is in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, those are approved. We have the director's salary nominations.
Yep.
There's four. Denise?
I motion to approve the director's salaries as presented.
Moved by Denise, second by Dan. Questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, those are approved.
Thank you.
Don't we have the continuing contract ones to do as well?
Oh, yeah, just a few of those.
Like everybody else, yeah.
So this is an interesting tradition that, you know, we have in the district, continuing contract staff are, their contracts are continued, but there's a history in the district representing them to the board for approval. I would say the same tradition occurred in Maine, and, you know, it just happens to be something that school boards do. But they're on continuing contracts, so unless there's reason not to renew someone, they're automatically renewed. So this action is more of a symbolic gesture of support from the school board for our continuing contract staff.
Denise?
I motion to approve the continuing contract professional staff members as submitted.
Moved by Denise, second by Brian. Questions?
I'll just recuse myself because my wife is listed.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor. Kenny has recused himself. Those are approved then. We need to sign the MS-22.
Sue, is there signing? Is this one of those ones where they have to sign in the same spot, or? Okay. Sue, can you do that at the microphone so it gets caught up?
No. It's the report of next year's budget in the format the state needs for, for surveys and all the documents they produce throughout the year, cost per pupil and all of that. We just report it back out that way.
Okay, we have a motion to, do we need a motion to sign it then?
I think you do. A motion to approve it.
A motion to approve it.
A motion to approve it. Denise?
I motion to approve MS-22 as presented.
Moved by Denise, second by Michael. Discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor. Why don't we start with Brian? You just sign it and then just take it along the table. We need a motion to accept a letter of resignation from Hoist River High School. Denise?
I motion to accept the letter of resignation as presented.
Moved by Denise is her second, second by Dan. Discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, that resignation is accepted. Excuse me. Okay, we have officers, and I think those could, unless somebody wants to separate those, I think we could make a motion of those, to accept those as a block for Bill Leslie, Lisa Harling, and Katie Lilly.
I'll move William Leslie as the ORCSD school district clerk for 2018-19. Lisa Harling as the school district treasurer for 2018-19, and Katie Lilly as the school district physician for 2018-19.
Moved by Kenny is her second, second by Dan. These people have been serving for quite a while, I think as long as I've been on the board. So, all this in discussion? I'm sorry, I'm getting late. Any discussion in this? Denise?
No, I'm sorry. I was going ahead, sorry.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Sorry about that.
Seven in favor, those three are elected.
Like, get on with it, no.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I usually put it as fast as I can.
No, I'm just kidding.
Okay, we have one policy for first read payment for school meals.
Yes.
So I'll move for first read policy EFAA payment for school meals.
Moved by Kenny is her second, second by Denise. Does one, so we want to talk through that one, or?
This policy was just brought into alignment with state and federal code, and we had a pretty extensive conversation about making sure that children, particularly at the middle school, were always served a quality meal regardless of whether their account is in arrears or not, because we did not want any child to go unserved at lunchtime. And we were assured by Mr. Richard that every child gets a quality meal. No substitute meals, they get the same meal the other children get.
I've literally seen them come to the office after lunch, they definitely do it.
Okay, I'm sorry, do we have a motion on this one?
Not yet.
Okay.
I moved it.
Yeah, we moved it, we just didn't vote for it.
Oh, Denise seconded, we just need a vote.
Okay. Were you to vote on this? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, that's approved for first read. I think that takes care of all the motions that we have to have. Am I missing anything?
No.
Okay. School Board Committee updates? Al?
Wellness Committee met. Couple of things they talked about. One was the sleep survey. They're going to try to crank that out and get it to us, but I think what really came up also is that you're going to have to have another year of it, just because the bus drivers, it's a difficult year to kind of implement it because we never really had the plan fully in place because we never had all the drivers to do our bus routes, so.
I don't think that has been.
I don't know. Anyway, so it was like, the idea is to do like a three-year run of the whole system.
Well, I think you always do a multi-year run, but I think the shortage of bus drivers shouldn't play. There's lots of data in that survey that was given last May that we would still like to see this May. But you're right, it should be a multiple-year survey.
And again, I'd like to see the whole plan put fully in place before, if you're reviewing a plan and seeing how a plan is doing and you're not able to fully implement it, you should do another year where you fully implement it. That's my opinion. The other thing was Heather Mackler brought up something called the SHAPE System, which is for mental health, which is evaluation of what programs we have. They are looking to do a wellness assessment survey, which I think is required. And then, the final thing I just want to talk about, I was the, I was the sub of the Wellness Committee. I got placed on it last June when Maria resigned, and so I took over the committee. And so, I've had the opportunity to sit through two meetings, and it's my opinion, we need to bring the charge in a discussion of what the Wellness Committee is doing. It feels awkward. They pulled the mental health portion of the Wellness is not residing anymore in the Wellness Committee, and there's a, it's a really large group of people, and it left a void in the committee. And it just seems kind of weird, too. Anyway, communication-wise, there was clear gaps in understanding of what the SHAPE Program was, and this is going around like nurses and everything else. So I think there needs to be a discussion coming back. And by the way, the wellness policy has not been updated since 2012. So it's far in excess of where normal policy is reviewed. So I think, again, it's a committee that's, what is this committee doing? Our primary focus really is stress and mental health, and we, I feel like we're detached from that. That should be, if we're having a committee, that should be a central component. So I think clearly, this needs to come back up to the board table, and let's have a clear discussion. We can bring the head of that and kind of hammer out where we're going with this, because this needs to be looked at.
And I appreciate that input, Al, and I just, I mean, for many years in a row, that's been one of our board goals, is the mental well-being of the students in our district. And we make goals, but, I mean, look at our town council goals, we've got like eight pages. We don't have that many goals. This is really something that we've highlighted as being incredibly important, and I'd love to see more progress going forward as well. And I think, Al, your suggestion is spot on.
Which reminds me that we need to assign committees.
But we need what?
Assign committees, you know?
Yeah, for next, yeah, next meeting, next meeting we need to do that.
So next meeting, so I think maybe? So next meeting, so I think maybe I'll touch base with everybody, see if they want to stay on the same committee or, and get that set up. But I felt, I was on the Wellness Committee for a while, too, and I felt, it felt a little bit detached from the board, you know?
Big time.
Really? I mean, it felt like they're doing things, but the things were not kind of connected to what, anything with us. It's almost like a committee that was like on its own.
It feels like it's a statutory obligation, is what it really feels like. You're just checking off the box to meet four times a year. That's what it really felt like to me, and it was like a committee in search of a mission. And I was like, boy, wait a second, this is a Wellness Committee. So, again, it needs to really come back, and we need to have a discussion about this.
Yeah, yeah. I think it even goes, year after year, we do the youth at risk assessment, and we see data. I would love to see how we're specifically really focused plans on, oh, here's an area that we should be working on, here's a plan to formulate, because what's the point of accumulating data if it's just sitting there? And I might be wrong, maybe it's being used, but as a board, I've not heard how we're utilizing all of that information.
So maybe?
Can I just interject? We did get a very comprehensive report from Heather at the beginning of this school year to the board, and she did tie in the health initiatives to the previous risk survey. Now, there's been a new survey, and unfortunately, the results, the data results from that survey have been wrong two, if not three, times, and they've pulled it back, which has prevented Heather from doing the evening presentation that she committed to do in January, because she still doesn't have the accurate data in order to do that. So she has built plans around the youth risk survey, and she has presented to the board, but not recently, because she still doesn't have the accurate data. So she has been using it.
Okay, great. Are there any updates? No? Public comment? No? Future meeting dates? We have the regular meetings on the 4th and the 18th, and I believe it's the 11th for the workshop on homework?
Yes.
So, Dr. Wors, I'm not sure, like, to go into non-public to just?
I'm not in any rush, you can do it next.
I think, let's put that off, okay? Okay.
We're still inside this year, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we do it on the same night we do the administrators, but it is nothing pressing.
Okay, we'll have that, and then maybe, like, I think maybe a written request to the board or?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. And I think we're done. Do we have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Moved by Michael, second by Brian. All those in favor? Okay, we're done.